Good morning all, apologies for the slightly delayed start. Heavy storm caused Damien and I to be a little bit later than we would ordinarily be travelling from Alfa. Can we please stand for the... Oh, sorry, and I will at the outset, welcome to the room Chris Rowan, first day as our newly installed director of work, so welcome aboard. Trust that you enjoy your time with us and we really look forward to working closely with you, so welcome aboard. Thank you. Almighty God, we acknowledge that we have a responsibility to look after your creation, especially this region we call Buckleton Regional Council. We are also conscious that our decisions are going to affect deeply the lives, land and property of the people we have come here to serve. Remind us to exercise respect for each of our fellow councillors, staff and for the people of our region. Help us in this meeting to act wisely, justly and intelligently in all our deliberations. Thank you Lord for the privilege of both leading and serving and assist us to do these well. Amen. We won't do condolences in this meeting, I'll hold that till a general meeting so it's not too downplayed. So, please. This is a very limited agenda meeting, as you would note, has been convened to deal with a number of reports that need expeditious decision, which we'll discuss individually. But there will be no questions on notice, there's no reports from offices other than those four decision reports which require immediate action. So, I note previously the apologies from both Paul and Jenny as they're on leave and these are not apologies, but I just want to point out for the record that councillors Peoples and Arthur are attending this meeting via Zoom, which we're recording the Zoom as well, Aaron, not just the room?
No, not. But I can see and hear what they're saying.
Oh, you can, okay, very good, thank you. So, for the purposes of a Zoom, a combined Zoom meeting, councillors remember that they're in the chamber even if they're not physically here, should either of the councillors have a PCOI, they will be asked to... or a DCOI where they have to leave, they will be asked to disconnect and then reconnect to ensure the participation in the meeting rule is observed. I'll take this opportunity at the outset of our business to acknowledge the traditional owners of the lands upon which we meet and their elders, both past, present and emerging. And I now call for those prescribed conflict of interest, councillor Gleeson.
Don't believe so, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Hanson.
Don't believe so, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Plum. Councillor Peoples.
No, I don't think I've got anyone any interest in it.
Councillor Arthur.
No, Mr Mayor.
Mark them to those of Red Letter Day, first time ever. Now, I call for, does any councillor present believe any other councillor present has a prescribed conflict of interest that they may have overlooked? There being none, declared conflicts of interest, councillor Plum.
I don't believe so, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Arthur.
No, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Peoples.
No, Mr Mayor.
Does any councillor present believe any other councillor may have overlooked a DCOI? The othical, we're cracking through this. So, I might just... Yep, it's not agenda to do anyway, is it? No, so in your agenda confirmation of minutes is nil, which is correct because this is not a general meeting, so we'll reconfirm then at the next general meeting. Petitions is also not relevant to this meeting, I'll skip right through to agenda item 3.2.1. I'd like to recommend that we close the meeting, section 254 J.G. due to the negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public decision would likely prejudice the interests of the local government. I'm actually asking that we do that to discuss the difference in price only. If any councillor present wishes to make comment about moving towards this as opposed to our current status, I'm really comfortable and would prefer that we do that in open meeting. So, I'm not in any way closing the meeting here to move to, to close the door on the debate around what we do or do not do, but I think to receive these and have a discussion around the pricing mechanisms only, we close the meeting and then we'll open the meeting and then have a broader debate if that's required by councillors, if everyone is happy with that recommendation. Can I have somebody move then that we close? Councillor Hanson, councillor Plum, those in favour?
Aye.
Seven zero. All right. Can I have a resolution to leave closed session, please? Councillor Gleeson, councillor Plum, second, those in favour? You're in favour of returning to open session, councillor Peoples?
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Seven zero. Okay. Councillors, what is at issue here is three options. Not proceeding with contract tendered waste collection services, proceeding with seven years on either an annual or a quarterly adjustment, or proceeding with 10 years on an annual or quarterly adjustment. So technically councillor Arthur, that's five options, but anyway, I've summarised them in three for the purposes of our discussion here. Would any councillor like to speak against engaging a external contractor?
Yeah, Mr Mayor, I'd ask a couple of questions, please.
Yes, please do.
Yep, how much again please is the purchase of our truck for our sales?
Depending on the size, Mr Mayor, between 400 and 700,000.
Okay, and we're looking at... You've got to, excuse me, Mr Mayor, because my agenda is on this iPad that I'm using to the meeting, but we're looking at 370 a year with JJ Richards, is that right?
No, definitely not. So, at a seven year option, you're looking at 229?
Yep.
Or 244, and at a 10 year option, you're looking at 229 or 248?
Right. And the other question I've got, looking back, Brett, at those figures, you know, I know there's a bit of repair on that truck, but if you take that out, how come our costs are so high to collect the rubbish ourselves? Now, I think you might explain part of that because we've got a contract with JJ Richards down on the east of Eden.
It's cheaper down there than it is here. That it's cheaper to pay JJ to do it in Alfa and Jericho than it is for our staff to do it in Buckleton, Arumack and Mutterborough, is that right, Brett?
It's... Well, year to date, oh, I should do a whole, a full year. So, year to date, it's 80,000 for Alfa and Jericho, where it's 152,000 operate our truck for the four days.
That's the market in Arumack and Mutterborough?
Yes.
Yep.
One thing there councillor Peoples, without being involved in the operations, but one thing there is we're costing somebody and the plant for hours and hours each week where they're not actually picking up rubbish because they're driving between the towns. So, they're spending longer in transit than they are actually collecting rubbish.
Yeah, I understand that, Mr Mayor, but I was just sort of trying to work out how many truck and then the cost for us to collect rubbish, it seems terribly high to me. You know, I thought the yearly cost to us would be as much as this. And those figures seem terrible behind them, and I thought it would be cheaper for us to collect our own rubbish once we pay off the truck. You know, and we might do that in two, probably outside three years.
No, waste collection truck advisers say that it's between five and six years to pay off the truck. You won't get your return on investment quicker, so that's a commonly accepted figure. Lormack and big city councils, contractors, all, that's why they advise contracts to be between seven and 10 years because it takes five to pay the truck off. And if you shorten it to five, they'll lift the price to ensure that their profit that they're seeking to make out of the job is received, so that, that it's well north of five to get a return on investment. And that's in an area, and that's in an area where they do no dry running even, so it could be substantially higher. That's a supposition on my part, but the fact that we spend hours in transit would be of a detriment to our return because we're driving instead of collecting, whereas those other trucks in bigger centres are collecting the whole time, they're into the laos. I agree with you councillor Peoples, our figures are very high, especially when taken in comparison to other local governments. But a lot of those, for example, want town councils or councils that are bigger than us with multiple assets, so they're collecting in the community where they operate the truck from. So that's, that allows for them to consolidate the time that they're investing in, both plant hire and... So if you look at the day when the rubbish is collected in Mutterborough, the drive to and from Mutterborough, either way, would take longer than to physically collect and empty the rubbish in Mutterborough. So you've got three times the cost. You know, you could collect the rubbish in Mutterborough in an hour and a half, take you two hours to drive there and two hours to drive back. So you're charging a person and a piece of plant for four hours internally, plus that it's not actually doing something that recovers that cost for us.
No, I understand that, but that cost works out, you know, we know what we're receiving because of the cost we collect per bin, but all I'm thinking about Sean is that at 244,000 that we probably might have to pay through a year if we buy a truck for 700,000 and after three years we're done with the truck in comparison to what we're paying JJ Richards. I know how you work it out and I'm just working it out a bit differently. The other thing I'd probably ask you is, what happens Brett in wet season if we can't get into Mutterborough? I know we collect the rubbish and then they go back and we'll do it manually, you know, there and here and wherever. Do we get charged though, as I said?
Yeah, don't have to be charged what they collect. I mean, and it's no different to what happens now, if the road's closed, we can't get over there, so the local staff collect the...
No, I understand all that, yep, but the JJ Richards charge, I think, normally can't with it?
Well, their charge is per bin collected. I can just clarify that, but you know, the contract is per bin. And I'm sure they would factor that in, in their contract pricing. One of the issues we've got with our current truck is it's not robust enough to do these long distances and it's so slow, so it takes us four days to collect the rubbish in three towns. The both contractors that are tendered said they can do all five towns in three days. So that's where they're making savings. Well, one of, you know, one of the areas of saving is that they can collect five, five towns in three days. Whereas we're doing three towns in four days, yeah, three towns in four days. So, yeah, they're much more efficient machines that they're using.
Three, Mr Mayor, does that price actually include Jericho and Alfa or is that as...
Yes, that's all five.
So that's all five towns, so we've got to factor in the fact we're paying 80,000 for Alfa and Jericho. But it's already included in here.
Councillor Gleeson.
Mr Mayor, the JJ Richards still use the Mutterborough landfill and the Arumack landfill and the Buckleton landfill or the tender is to use the Buckleton landfill? Arumack and Mutterborough?
Hopefully they bring it back here, that is what would be the best possible outcome. We don't want, so that we can extend those, if they've got a big enough truck that can carry it, that's the problem. Our truck can't, but if they've got a big truck, we want them to bring the rubbish here rather than dumping all that household waste in Arumack and Mutterborough.
I understand what we want, it's what's going to be written on the contract.
Yeah, and so that is in their, in their tender, and that's what we requested. They're definitely states Buckleton landfill.
Councillor Arthur.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, councillor Peoples and Gleeson have touched on a couple of things that are a bit more or less. In our bundle there, there's about 10% difference between the contractor and our cost per bin, per week. Did we run some scenarios with the same sized truck that the contractor has talked about providing or a bigger truck to see if we can achieve better than a 10% saving? Or have we not gone into that level of detail? But moving forward, so if we bought the same truck, do we save totally enough to save us 10%? Or if we get a bigger truck to go to Arumack and Mutterborough and bring it back to Buckleton landfill, do we have the potential to save more than that 10% price difference per bin?
I haven't done the calculations.
Because I would assume a reasonable component of our cost is, because we've got such a small truck. I don't know how many wheelie bins fit into it, but even in Buckleton alone, we would spend a fair bit of time driving out to the dump, emptying and come back. And then like you said, we go all the way to Mutterborough, most likely spend more time driving there and back. I just, yeah, it would have been nice to see some figures to say that if we were to procure the same sized truck that the contractor has given us some details on, but do we save enough time to equal or to improve our costs? That councillor Peoples said, as he said, seem high compared to what the contractor can do it for.
I think one of the issues is our wage component, no matter which truck we have. So we have to cover the, you know, we've got a full-time employee, then you've got to cover for the RDOs when they're on leave. I think that where the contractor probably doesn't have that, by doing it in three days of the week, they can avoid some of those issues. So, I don't think, I don't know, don't think, no matter which truck we have, I don't think we'd save on the wages component. But we may save on the vehicle component.
Bear in mind that it's dear to buy.
But through you, Mr Mayor, if we have a larger truck, I appreciate that, an even bigger truck is more expensive than possibly what the contractor has showed us, that they intend to use. But surely if we have a 20% saving in time doing the rubbish bin, that time can be spent with that staff member, whether it's parks and gardens or helping on road crew or like something else then gets done for that time. And that leads to my second question. We obviously have other work for the staff member or members that drive the truck, but they will have, they'll just go on to other duties somewhere else?
Yes.
Oh, I assume someone is asking.
Yes, no, there's no, no redundancies or no one is losing their job during this process.
The point, just a point I want to make here to contribute to the debate is continuity of service. Problem with, I suspect there's quite real validity to the point councillor Arthur makes around enhanced operational savings with substantially larger truck, I think a twinge to your bogey drive. Truck that's big enough on decent sized tyres to handle the trip from Mutterborough across would mean that we could do pretty similar to what a contractor could do. But all equipment experiences breakdowns, 100% of it does. Unlike a grader, which we can bring any one of our vendor panel, Red People will get one when our graders break down, which inevitably they do, bring new ones. Or we just delay the job, we just go, we just got to pull up and wait for the grader to fix. You can't delay waste collection, so if a truck, someone could work, you walk into the depot tomorrow and the truck for some reason, a fuel line's gone, fuel pump's gone, the compactor doesn't work, the arm, the hydraulic arm that picks the bins up doesn't work. Any number of things happens to these vehicles and it is irrelevant how well they're looked after, it will still go wrong. Obviously the worst, they're cared for, the more prevalent the problems, but that's, would hopefully not be an issue for us. And what happens inevitably is two, maybe three communities don't get their rubbish picked up that week. Now, I can tell you that there's no better way in my mind to alienate an urban population than leave them with full wheelie bins for two weeks. Inherent in a contract like this is redundancy. It's not our problem and it's not our residents' problem if their in situ truck breaks down. The benefit of this is JJ provides another truck from another depot and the rubbish still gets collected. Now, it may have a day's delay because obviously the problem might only get found out. It may not have a day's delay, I'm not pre-shadowing what they do, but we have seen here demonstrated over years and years where there is a problem with our truck, where you're to send three or four labourers out with a trailer to pick up wheelie bins and all manner of workplace health and safety risks that come with that, or the rubbish just simply doesn't get collected for that day or that period of time. And to me, I was keen to see this be neutral. This to me didn't have to be a exercise in cost saving or shifting. This was about providing continuity, certainty with inbuilt redundancy for our communities about waste collection. JJ Richards are the preeminent experts and I'm sure councillors are going to give me a story where there's a problem in another community, but they are the preeminent expert in waste recovery. And for those who think that one of the sole responsibilities of local government is rubbish because it's one of the three Rs, it is, it definitely is. Managing that waste is more than just collecting it though. We've got landfills that we need to manage, we've got strategies around restricted material management. There's still a whole host of things that we need to do extraneous to this contract. Engaging a contractor to me is a safe, is a way to safeguard against things like equipment failure and provide certainty, so that to me, so long as the thing wasn't too much dearer, which I expected it to be, on par or slightly dearer, but good old private enterprises suggesting they can do it cheaper. I would suggest there'll be significant rise and fall, councillor Gleeson alluded to, certainly towards the back end of this, but I do note that it's not a seven plus three contract. The proposal here is a seven plus one plus one plus one, so council can agree individually for each of the remaining three years of the contract to go one year at a time to ensure value for money being retained. So I think, to me, this is not about cost saving at all, and even if we only recovered or spent about the same as we're currently spending, but without the pressure of waste collection services not occurring or a workplace health and safety obligation on the side. Councillor Rogers, I interrupted you at the start there though.
Through you, Mr Mayor, I was just going to ask a couple of questions for Damien still in the room. Jericho and Alfa having JJ Richards, the track record there, like is the community fairly happy with that service?
Through you, Mr Mayor, the service has been really good over the years and they also, and there's been a breakdown, they'll actually have that truck, another truck come in pretty well on that same day. So, also one of the biggest things is we don't have a rate then for the public holidays, so they actually come in, whatever day they've gone down, they'll still do a run there on the public holidays as well. So, you know, it's been a good service over the years.
Thanks, Damien. I was also going to ask where we're going to dump the rubbish, but councillor Gleeson has already got that answer. The other thing I was going to ask was, does anyone know what the lifespan of a truck is? A garbage truck?
So, Townsville City work on seven years as their average, some are gone in five, some will go in 10. And that, sorry, is dependent upon a couple of things, but predominantly what causes them to wear is the ones that wear out quicker are the ones that collect in more industrialised sections of the community. Their compactors break down quicker, so my reference for that was Townsville City. They sell them pretty well at seven years, but if they've got an exceedingly good one, it hangs around until it's 10 year old as their spare trucks for the days where their other ones break down.
Also, if we were to buy, you know, a truck, it'd have to be a big truck, but are we, is it possible for us to do five towns if we had a huge truck, I mean?
Sorry, for those of you online, councillor Rogers just asked and there was nods, not an answer. Would it be possible for us to do five towns if we bought a big truck? The CEO and I both nodded, sorry, so yes, the answer to that question would be yes.
And also the old truck that we've got now, if we were to go with JJ Richards, would we be keeping that for like special events or just circumstances that we might need it?
Yeah, Mr Mayor, the intention was to keep it initially as a backup, but if, once we see the track record if JJ Richards can get a truck in the same day, if something goes wrong, then there's no point in keeping the old truck. But we wouldn't be selling it straight away.
Just thinking about Mutterborough being cut off, it might be an area we'd leave it over there while in the wet season, maybe it could be in town.
Potentially, you know, putting it in Arumack. It can do the Arumack-Mutterborough run if...
They cut off.
During the wet season, but we haven't made a decision on that.
What would you do with the rubbish?
Councillor Plum has just asked what would you do with the rubbish, the landfills will still be there. On a permanent basis, but I mean, desperate times, desperate measures, we won't be closing those landfills. Would be, they'll still be there for the community to use them, so if council needed to use them on those odd weeks, we, you know, we wouldn't average two weeks a year that you couldn't reach those communities at all.
That truck's seven years old, it's obviously come to the end of its useful life. It's obviously come to the end of its useful life, we've had to spend substantial amounts of money on it. So it's got the potential that it'll break down again in the near future. Seems to be a regular occurrence, so really there's no advantage in keeping it except for convenience.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, some other questions.
Certainly.
Will we, will we charge JJ Richards to use our landfill?
Not for our waste, but for their commercial waste, yes, like we do now.
So we don't, yeah, no, that's it.
Sorry councillor Arthur, I missed your hand.
No, that's right, Mr. Mayor, through you. With some of the larger events that Barcalden holds, would that then be up to the event organizer to, like if they want to clean, a pickup through the event, like if we have a three or a four day event that requires rubbish removal or cleaning, is that on council or is that up to the event organizer to then have an agreement, a separate agreement with JJ Richards for pickup?
If it, yeah, it would have to be a separate agreement. I don't know whether they would charge council as part of the contract and the council would have to pass on the costs to the event organizer. So say for West Tech, I know because we do garbage, council does the garbage runs, you know, additional garbage runs, we charge West Tech for that. But that would, that would come into our, I suppose, community donation policy of how much we allow.
No, because I was just thinking bigger truck for in particular that event, yeah, just access around the site or even just, if they've got the bins in the showroom and there was races on or something like that, or around May Day weekend. The flexibility of us having a truck or access to a truck.
Yeah, we also have the option of skip bins as well.
Yeah, yeah, right. All right, that's okay, thank you.
Councillor Gleeson.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, a couple of, a couple of things have just been raised. The best tractor, I've always been told the best tractor is the contractor, so I'm quite happy to go with that, with the contractor part of it. The, we've just got to, and we looked at it, spoke a while ago. Just got to make sure that the current employees don't get the idea that they're, that they're getting moved on. With the little truck, I've noticed that around town here, the little truck runs into the back of these hotels and all the little alleyways. A JJ Richards going to be able to do that or has the council got to write to those people and ask them to move their rubbish out of the front so that the big truck can get in? Taking these, those couple of things first.
So the big truck, they already have a big truck that they, that visits every week and it drives down that alleyway here, it drives in the back of main road. So it, it's already accessing very small areas. So I don't think that would be an issue.
One other thing, Mr. Mayor, if you don't want. We were just talking about community events like West Tech or the May Day weekend, three, four day weekend. And the community organizes ourselves, pick up our own rubbish to take about to the rubbish, to the new site. Can that be done on a Sunday or a Saturday? Can you go to the new site, do you on a Saturday or Sunday?
Yeah, twenty-four hours, seven days a week.
But you can't go into the sec, the major section of it?
Never allowed in there without council supervision.
Thank you. Questions councillor Peoples?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm not convinced the contract's the way to go. You know, I still would like to have our own truck, I still see that probably three years. I don't necessarily, I don't understand how our costs are so high. I thought we could do some work on that and do better than, than what we're doing. So for those reasons, I'm probably more interested in buying your own truck and a lot better truck than in, than in our contract.
Questions or comments again councillor Arthur?
Ah, Mr. Mayor, I would have liked to have seen, yeah, some costings or some scenarios with the same sized truck, just to see if we could save time and have it better. Because I still, I appreciate your comments about if it goes to contract, then it's contractors' responsibility or issue if the truck breaks down. I just would have liked to have seen some, some black and white figures to say that we can't achieve those savings or better savings that may weigh off any interruptions. I do lean towards going to contract, but yeah, I probably would have liked to have seen a bit more hard data on our inability to, to lower our costs.
I think one of the other issues is the technology in these trucks is quite advanced. So then we'd need to make sure our operators are skilled and replacement operators are also skilled to be able to perform those duties. So it is a, it is a sort of a moving away from just driving a truck and operating a lifter to, yeah, it's a higher level of technology.
Mr. Mayor, I understand also that, you know, every time we go with a contractor like this, they're not in our community and over time they add up. You know, we do, I know the acting CEO has just said that that person will get a position somewhere else in the workforce, but eventually I think we lose that man in our workforce. And over time, I think that reduces the people that do live near town.
Councillor Hanson?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm more inclined to go with the contractor. I think in the long run, they've just said we don't have to worry if our trucks break down. And looking at the years of our truck and the time it actually spends in the workshop, I'm more inclined to go with the contractors.
Councillor Plum?
Yeah, I'm probably leaning towards contractor as well. I look at West Tech, for instance, where we did have skip bins one year and it just made it so much easier and sort of having forty-four wheelie bins. All the committee had to put those wheelie bins out on the Saturday morning volunteers. And skip bins just held so much more rubbish and they just kind of wanted to play with it. So I was looking at that as an alternative. But yeah, obviously they come up here every Wednesday and pick up around town very quick and easy and very fresh.
Councillor Rogers?
Just got another question, Mr. Mayor. The local content, the community benefits scores are like higher for JJ Richards than the other contractors. So does that mean that they do use more local, local people or?
JJ Richards.
Higher?
So they scored higher?
They scored higher in the local content and community benefits than the other. So I was assuming that they use some local.
Yeah, so they did put in their, into their contract, they'd be looking to employ a local person at some point if they have to change drivers.
Thank you, Brett. I, I am, I am, um, in, like, I'm, I'm, I think I want to go with the contractors. So now I think just if we can relieve the burden on our rate payers, the costs of collecting rubbish last few years, that has gone up substantially. And if we can keep it from doing that in the future, I think that's our responsibility. I think this is the way to go, so that's all I've got to say.
All right, I might just move, there is a recommendation. Can I have somebody move something please and then we'll go to formal debate? We've had a general discussion here, I'm happy to continue the debate, but I think we need to formalize it via a resolution, either what's preferred or alternative. Councillor Plum?
I'd like to move the resolution.
Okay, let's move councillor Plum. Councillor, would you like to see inserted there as per councillor Gleeson's suggestion from the beginning of the debate, after the over ten years, a phrase with contracted rise and fall provisions? For those not in the room, the resolution that has been moved by councillor, oh, sorry, I should call for a second at first. Councillor Hanson, seconds. The resolution as presented now by councillor Plum is that council receives the tender summary and evaluation report and awards the tender for waste collection services to JJ Richards and Sons Proprietary Limited for the price of two million four hundred eighty-three thousand three forty-six over ten years with contracted rise and fall provisions on the basis of this tender is the most advantageous to council. All right, I'll open the debate formally, those, is there a speaker against?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, that was for the annual rise and fall, was it?
Sorry, yes.
Yes, okay, yeah.
So that's with contracted annual rise and fall. Now, happy for, I'm sure we can debate an amendment which may take that back to quarterly or those who wish to speak in opposition to this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll speak in opposition to it. I, as I have on the day before, after about three years, I think that we would probably own our own truck and a bigger truck and a truck that can do a lot better job for us. I think it'd do the jobs. I'm sure we could find something that does skip bins and that sort of work also. I also think that it's still employment in our area and I know that the acting CEO has just said that they're going to afford someone local, but if the truck's coming from Emerald Down Tye there somewhere, it makes it a bit difficult. So for those reasons, and I know I don't, I still have trouble believing, you know, that we're, we can't do our waste collection with a new truck a lot cheaper than we're currently dealing. I think we've made the savings with our own truck anyway, so my preference was to go with our own truck. So here I'm against the, you know, the contract.
Thank you councillor Peoples. Anyone wish to speak in favor? Does anyone wish to propose any amendments? Or wish to speak against councillor Arthur, sorry, you went to speak.
No, Mr. Mayor, I, I do, I lean towards the contractor, but like I said earlier, I probably would have liked to have seen a few more figures about any potential savings we might have been able to, to achieve with a bigger truck. But yeah, I do take your point about the possibility of a higher or a more consistent, shouldn't say higher, a more consistent service level. If their truck breaks down, then there's a better likelihood that they can bring another resource in, whereas we have struggled in the past. And so that probably gets it over the line to go to a contractor for me. And did I read somewhere that the truck will actually be based in our depot? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So that's a request of their tender is that they saw the truck in our depot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Plum, it's your resolution, would you like to sum up?
No, I'm pretty happy with what I've said.
Councillor Hanson? Councillor Peoples is the lead speaker against the resolution. Would you like to sum up before we put the resolution to the vote?
No, I've said my first name, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Call the vote please, those in favor? Against? Resolution is carried six one, councillor Peoples dissenting. Thank you councillors. Right, next series of resolutions also are time conflicted because committees have been given until the end of March to submit their requests for assistance. And obviously May Days, about four days after our, five days after our general meeting, we had to make a decision to commit whatever funds we're going to for the May Day festival events. So attached are the request for assistance forms. We'll start with agenda item three three one, which is the donation request Buckles Senior Rugby League. We have a net figure of twenty thousand in the, in the budget, this request is for five thousand. I'm not going to speak to it anymore, it's very detailed, the form is attached. Councillor Plum? Well, I have, I have a mover, if we do, I'll get a seconder and then I'll go to discussion. Is there a seconder? Councillor Hanson, so we can strike out does not agree, please. All right, discussion, councillor please.
Mr. Mayor, the senior rugby league are asking for five thousand dollars in cash plus assistance. Is that the way that you read that?
The resolution says that the use of the village green and free hire of the stage, that's their assistance that they want.
Provided an allocation of five thousand dollars plus free hire of portable stage and the use of the village green. So there's, there's, yeah, there's five thousand dollars in cash. Cash money, correct.
Can you just explain to councillor Gleeson that this presentation's going across between seven and twenty thousand dollars? To the developers and the senior?
So they secured grant funding to go with this of ten thousand dollars? The total show is a seventeen thousand eight hundred dollar plus GST show. And they want to have it uptown on the morning, the Saturday morning, just sort of to add to the culture of the event. Councillor Arthur?
Um, Mr. Mayor, what else is or do we have planned or organized on that Saturday morning? Is, is it literally just going to be the, the Bluey Show or have we got other?
The markets.
Activities?
Mr. Mayor, the markets are being organized for that Saturday morning.
At that location? At Juxons, yeah. So to complement that councillor Arthur will be the markets adjacent to the area that's requested here for this.
Yep, okay. And I understand the show was on in Longridge just on the weekend, is that correct?
Yes, yes, I'm being told.
Yeah, do we know or have any feedback as to whether there was good numbers up there or was it a good show or? It's not really in my wheelhouse, I don't, don't really know Bluey.
Mr. Mayor, anyone with young kids would know Bluey.
I, I would probably enjoy it too, but I'm just, I know it all years, but I just don't.
Councillor Plum, you got some?
Is the street going to be locked or can anyone listen? Um, Brett, is the street going to be locked or can we have this?
No, no. Councillor Peoples, comment, oh, sorry, councillor Gleeson?
Mr Mayor, we're, yeah, the, the street, so that, on that morning, there is the, um, the village green, yeah, the village green, we markets all along the, but the street is not going to be closed.
No.
So the, the, in, in, um, in the councils, we will be responsible, not responsible, but we're, we are going to assist with tables and chairs and, and whatever. Um, for everybody, for the whole community, but five thousand dollars goes directly towards the, um, the senior football for the.
Bluey Show.
For the Bluey Show.
Yep.
So it's really, they're, they're actually asking for it, but it is a, a community, it is really a community event.
Correct, yeah, it's not being held at football, it's being held.
The football.
That's right, you know, no one's paying, backing senior rugby league to go to this show, they're hosting it as, I guess. Well, I guess we sort of put the call out there for people to organise events and we pulled back from that coordination level to support and that's what this is in line of. So the community group here has said, well, let's put on a kid show, let's do it Saturday morning to complement the markets. Um, and then those are so inclined to head over and do the races in the afternoon, so there's not a conflict of events. Um, yeah. Um, councillor Peoples, I was throwing to you.
No, well, good thanks, Mr Mayor.
Okay, uh, yes, councillor.
Mr Mayor, this is going down the track of victory, another resolution to the, um, rev club. I read on Facebook last night that they've actually cancelled.
Well, we're going to withdraw this in a minute when we get to it, yes.
I just thought that may make a difference.
Yeah, probably a good point because you're talking about the money, the overall bucket of money. Um, so the resolution or agenda item three, three, three will be withdrawn because that event won't be proceeding. So we've got a budget of twenty thousand there, this is calling for five, but there is an, so just foreshadowing that three point three point three won't be presented today because of the event not proceeding. So, um, yes, you're right councillor Hanson, it potentially frees up in some people's minds the amount of money that's actually available. All right, are we comfortable to proceed to the vote? No more comments? I put the resolution, those in favour? Seven zero, three, three, two.
Mr Mayor, this one, um, is, um, way avoided, this is that it's up to a amount of two thousand dollars because we're not sure what the traffic management plan will actually cost. If, if the May Day committee can use last year's plan with some minor adjustments, it may actually cost less than five hundred dollars. But if it has to be totally redone, um, then it would cost more. So the recommendation is to provide a donation of up to a total of two thousand dollars. Plus the inclined hire, um, tables and chairs.
Three years, Mr Mayor, are we, we're not going to run into trouble with TMR, with everybody trying to close May Day?
Well, that's what, though, all they require is this TMP, that's the only, if we didn't, if we tried to do it without it, then we would run into big trouble. But this, the traffic management plan is submitted to TMR for their approval.
Yeah.
And that's, so once it's developed and considered, it's a null and thing to them, they don't necessarily like the, um, the main street being shut, but they know that there's once a year that they accept usually and it's May Day is the one reason. And I just note there that comments in the background material that, that at this point they haven't requested staff traffic control, but if that is required and it's available for us to provide, that would be the additional top up to get it to two thousand, that'd cost four hundred and twenty-three dollars. Councillor Arthur?
Uh, Mr Mayor, two-part question. Uh, it, we wouldn't have like a TNP under our RMPC that could be used, like if our staff are going to put the somers up, aren't we not better placed to use instruments that we already have in place with TMR to use? And on that request for assistance, it doesn't mention traffic management plan at all. It does say permit to hold march. But there's not, I, I can't find anywhere on there where it says cost for a traffic management.
I believe that, that permit to hold the march is what they're talking about, um, the cost. So. Um, Jenny's obviously not here, she's, she's met with the committee, um, Jenny's submitted this, um, know, knowing that that's what the cost potentially will be. For us to issue a permit, we need to have the traffic management plan.
Yeah, but, but that's a matter, wouldn't we as council have like standing TNP's under our RMPC contract with main roads to be able to close that section of road? That would negate the need for a new traffic management plan, like especially if we're putting the signs up, which I would assume, even though that doesn't say it, is probably most likely that we are.
Um, Mr Mayor, I'll give microphone, um, and, and, and get in here.
Yep, so, um, Mr Mayor, the, and that's, that is why the, you know, in the background of the resolution, it's saying there is a plan from last year, if we can just use that template, we might need the money, but if it has to be redone. So it's, so it's an allowance for us to, to re, redo that plan if we have to for that event. Otherwise, we can use last, if last year's fits a criteria, then we can just use that and change the dates.
I'm with you councillor Arthur, I couldn't think of a reason why you wouldn't be able to duplicate because nothing, it's not like traffic conditions have changed, lane direction hasn't changed, parking hasn't changed. Literally nothing has changed in the main street of Buckleton for ten years, so I can't see what's going to change in the last twelve months. But should TMR require, I guess this is just a, being an extra cautious cover by council, by officers here to ensure that they have your, our authority to spend the money, should it be required. But I'm with you, I, for the life of me, couldn't see why we'd be redoing anything other than the date.
The, yeah, the, the only thing I can think of is be, because it's an event as opposed to the roadworks or if something in MUTCD's changed since last year, that, yeah, something major or whatever.
Could you help us with what that acronym means, sorry councillor Arthur?
It's the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, so it, it, it's the book that dictates how you build or make a traffic management plan or a traffic guidance plan.
Yes, it was actually a change made, um, as it first assembled last year. Um, it will be a minor muscle movement, um, and it shouldn't affect, uh, anything that's been done here. But I know that, um, with a lot of contracts we've had, um, under, where we've got works under construction, we're quite wishful looking at dated contracts signed pre and after, based on those changes.
All right, well, we'll find out very shortly whether we can or not. If that is the case, then hopefully it can save us a substantial amount of money. But if not, then we have this resolution to agree to provide that if that is the case. Do I have a mover? Councillor Gleeson moves that we agree. Strikeout please do not agree. Councillor Plum, seconds. Is there any opposition to this? Those in?
There's, um, sorry, Mr Mayor, there's still a reasonably large bucket of money or budget, or should I say bucket of money, budget for our events or our assistance with the, the festival?
Yes, well, we've only approved to date five thousand dollars out of the twenty and there'd be a small, very small part of Angela's time lately would have been posted to doing a few things like some flyers, she's helped with flyers, um, for a few groups and some social media stuff. So, um, yeah, there'd be still well over, well over, with, before this is adopted, there'd be still well over ten thousand dollars sitting there unallocated.
Yep.
Closer to fourteen.
Mr Mayor, um, I haven't heard, but is anything for any organisation got together for the same?
I haven't heard of it.
Have you heard of it?
No.
Are they waiting for someone to?
Just don't want to confuse that with this resolution, but there is, yeah, there's still, I think all groups are still probably feeling their way through what this year event is going to look like, unfortunately, the, I, I, I won't confuse it. Those in favour of this resolution, please? Councillor Peoples, you're in favour?
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Seven zero. Um, three, 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 withdrawn. Um, Brett, can you just advise what's, what's transpired here to cause the Motorsport Association to decide not to run this year's event, just so people have it on record?
Mr Mayor, on, um, Saturday, the Motorsport Association asked, could they do an inspection of the cross strip? Um, because they, we've recently resealed the cross strip. Uh, so I've, I've taken, took them out there Saturday afternoon. Um. They had an inspection, drove up and down, had checked it, checked it out. Um, they then had, had a meeting after the inspection. I wasn't at the meeting, uh, but, uh, their concerns were two-fold, one was that the, uh, because the reseal was so fresh that the, the vehicles would, um, damage the reseal. Um, and then secondly, that once it was damaged, that it would become unsafe for the vehicles because there'd be a lot of loose stone. Um, so the decision was made to cancel the event for this year.
Okay, so at this stage, Brett and I have decided that there's no need for agenda, this agenda item to proceed because we've been formally advised, or you've been formally advised of their decision and social media's certainly seen that, so with your agreement, we will just, um.
Mr Mayor, Chris may be able to explain what the reseal consisted of?
Yeah, so typically, so this is part of, um, this, this was, this is funded with, I'm not, not actually sure if it was actually from the, um, that, that funding came from part two up. Uh, but, um, those works were undertaken as part of, uh, as part of that contract. Um, so we've gone out, uh, engaged, uh, RPQ, they've gone out and conducted the reseal on the cross strip. Typically, when you're doing a, a runway, um, you, you, you're actually pushing your bitchmen to the limits of, um, of, of what you can, simply because aircraft, um, with the years of aircraft, damage to props, wings and whatnot. Um, you're actually trying to make sure you, you're minimising as much as you can, any of that stone that's going to chip up or flick up and cause chips to, to aircraft. Uh, so standard practice is heavy on seal, um, which wouldn't work well with, um, with anyone conducting any sort of motorsport activity on that seal. It will get better over time, but it is very, very fresh. Um, the timing is changed around that, I just believe, we're, we're based on the end of the financial year and availability of contractor, um, far too, um, far too hot to undertake those works earlier. Um, and, um, getting too close to the end of the financial year, um, just with demands of other contracts that they had ongoing. Um, so it's decided, um, avoid all the, the, the previous worst director, uh, that we undertake those, um, those seals in, in March.
Three years, Mr Mayor, I think, I think Chris just answered more question, I was going to ask the question was, you know, if it's, um, if the materials aren't good enough to race on, is it good enough for any aeroplanes?
Yeah.
Because there was some, of course, you don't believe everything you hear and see on social media that there was one particular person that, that said that it was, yeah, if it's not safe enough to race motor cars, not safe enough for any planes.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, it's, it's almost counterintuitive, it is absolutely counterintuitive the way we ignore the seal, right? Um, um, you don't want, um, when you've got heavy traffic, um, it gives opportunity for stone and bed. Um, but, um, for a runway, you're just not seeing the consistency of heavy traffic. Um, and the practice is, um, spray heavy and roll a lot, uh, to get as flush surfaces as you possibly can. Um, and that's, yeah, it's unfortunately, uh, probably timelier than anything else, it doesn't allow that, that bitchman to go through, go through a summer. Um, and then, then I, I, I would expect that it should be formed for next year.
Anyone online with any comments? Okay.
Uh, sorry, Mr Mayor, so are the motorsports group confident or by given time that next year's event might go ahead?
So there are comments on, on Buckleton Motorsports Facebook page, there was some quite positive comments about see you all in twenty-three, um, it didn't look to be a faulting of the group from what my, I have not yet spoken personally, councillor Arthur, to anyone from that group. Um, but the way I read their social media commentary about this event was extreme, I, I, I'm complimenting on it, like obviously they'd be disappointed, um, you know, and, and I perhaps even braced myself for some negativity about council's role in this, they were extremely professional, very courteous, very positive. They, they just stated that it would be potentially unsafe for them to proceed, didn't go into any detail. Some of the followers, as councillor Gleeson suggested, who have not been to the Buckleton airstrip, um, in, in, well over a decade, um, made comment about that stone and the damage. But realistically, the positive feedback from the group further down in the comments pointed to the fact that they were really looking forward and, and saw twenty twenty-three as quite achievable. So, yeah, I think they were reluctant and disappointed, but they just took it at, say, a, a risk averse position, which, which they'd have complimented on, I guess, and, um, yeah, I think they're looking forward to next year.
So, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Plum?
Um, is there any way that we can, um, hold back with some sort of, um, donation to them next year?
Oh, we, we've got a budget allocation for next year. We can give them more next year, like this budget's going to be used this year, unless you're suggesting we pay them now for next year's event, no.
Just let me know that the, that there will be an allocation next year to, um, seek some funding to go ahead and give them a little bit of inspiration. When something stops, it's a bit hard to get it going.
Agreed. All right, no further comment on that agenda item, we will close the formal meeting please at nine forty-four AM.